Okay, meeting called to order. It's 7:03. We're going to start with item number one. Called to order the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight's youth group is going to be introduced by Councilmember Knapp.
Good evening, fellow councilmembers and community. Happy holidays to everyone that's here tonight. The ACT Club, which stands for Action Changes Things, is a student-led community service club that inspires and promotes youth to get involved in community service. Open to anyone interested in making a change in their community, less than two years old, and primarily composed of ninth graders, the ACT Club has already made significant strides assisting the Christmas Tree Lane Association in putting up and taking down lights, participating in annual Coastal Cleanup Day, doing a toy drive and fundraiser to bring toys and DVD players to the Pediatric Unit of County USC, and they held a talent show where the funds raised went to creating health and hygiene kits for immigrants. This year, they are tackling climate change, partnering with Omigos de los Rios to create an environmentally friendly space at a local high school and will lead a climate change march. They will also be fundraising to assist the California Wildlife Victims. I'm here to introduce Presidents Amina Malone, Secretary Savannah Trepp, Projects Coordinator Ben Jennings, and Social Media Coordinator Brady Beraniega, and Members Australia and Stephanie, who I think may not be here. So please come forward.
[applause]
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. With liberty, justice, and...
Thank you, and it's always wonderful to include our youth. And one of the members, I won't say which one, but one of the members is my daughter. So it makes me really proud. So, thank you for coming. And I hope they stay for the party and festivities afterwards. So that will happen shortly. Moving on, roll call, item 1.2.
Oh, roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Good evening and happy holidays. Please respond after you hear your name. Okuri Izimi.
Present.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Jeff Simmons.
Excuse me.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Erin Cheetah.
Excused.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Gloria Senica.
Present.
Antonio Bersera.
Present.
Nick Santangelo.
Present.
Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Sylvia Vega.
Excused.
Diane Markison.
Present.
We have a quorum with 13.
Thank you. Moving on, item 1.3. Councilmember Sutherland. Approval of the...
Of the agenda. The Executive Committee met on December the 10th and approved the agenda as presented. Copies are on the piano in the back of the room. Are there any additions or corrections from the councilmembers? Dorothy?
May I add a census tract report?
That'll be quick. 8.1. That'll be 8.1. Any, anything else? In that case, I move to accept the agenda as amended.
All those in favor say aye. Nays? Abstentions? So moved. Okay, moving on, item 2. Going to start with the Chairman's Report, item 2.1. I want to make all this very brief because we've got the holiday party coming up here, and I know everyone's made their reports really short. One thing I want to acknowledge before that is last year, we acknowledged a gentleman here, in the name of Bruce Dennis. He was one of the Buffalo Soldiers, 93 years old, and we gave him a certificate of recognition. He came here, I don't know if any of you remember him being here, but wonderful gentleman, was talking about what it was like with the horses, and he did not want to stop talking, which was wonderful. We learned so much. Unfortunately, he passed away on November the 15th. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. It was wonderful having here, and it was nice that we could acknowledge him at that point, and best goes out to him and his family. A couple other quick things is I just came from, with the sheriffs, from the Fuentes family who lost the mother on Woodbury a couple months ago, and the sheriffs, they'll probably go into more detail, but they delivered gifts and dressed up as Santa for the kids, and we did that just before this. So, at this time when we're going to be celebrating holidays and we're celebrating family, and it's wonderful seeing my daughter here, we are a community and we are a family, and those that we love and lose are all part of it too. So as we celebrate, let's just remember everybody and embrace the young ones into their new celebration. So, that's it. Moving on, thank you. Item 2.2, Vice Chair. Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay. Let's see. As indicated on the agenda, tonight's meetings has two opportunities to make public comment. On the agenda, you'll see number six for general public comment, which is to talk about anything that you'd like to address to the council. And on, under item seven, under the committee reports, we are going to have an action item which also has public comment available on it. It's going to be on the wireless facility on Lincoln. And, comment cards are on the piano, so if you'd like to make public comment, please complete a card and return it to a council member at either end of the table here. And when you make your comments, come up to the podium and say what you have to say. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to item 2.3, Recording Secretary. Councilmember Jones.
Fellow councilmembers, the minutes of November 19, 2019 were emailed to you for your review with a request for additions and corrections. The minutes now include all additions and corrections that were received. I make a motion to accept the minutes of November 19, 2019 in final form as presented with the addition of the corrections and be placed on the town council's webpage. A second motion.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Any nays? Abstentions? So moved. Okay, moving on. Item 2.4, Treasurer Report. Councilmember Lee.
Yes, thank you. The checking account balance for the Altadena Town Council is $2,195.23. I will be passing around the can. We run on donations here, so if you can give, please do, and I'm going to pass it around that way, and then just feed it through the audience and then back to the other side. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one quick comment with that. Last month, we forgo the donations for the council to go towards the Fuentes family. And for those that didn't know, last month, $240 was raised to help the Fuentes family through the holidays. So, thank you. Moving on, item 2.5, Corresponding Secretary. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. So, of course, we're ending the year very shortly, so we'll have some exciting things to report in January. So nothing special. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number three, Public Safety Reports. 3.1, CHP Officer Cooper. Welcome and happy holidays.
Good evening, everyone. I got a few quick things to go over. So it looks like December 20th, on Friday, this Friday, we're going to be starting winter break at the schools, and they'll be out through January 6th. So that Monday of January 6th, they're going to start back up. So, that should kind of help out with a little bit of traffic through the holidays. I'm going to try and get out there on December 20th as well, while the schools are letting out, just to kind of help out with the traffic as we're releasing for winter break. Christmas Tree Lane, last Saturday, we had the Christmas Tree Lane Ceremony, and we helped out with traffic control again on that with the Sheriff's Department's assistance. And it seemed like there was pretty good turnout. I don't know, it was pretty busy, so, but everything went smooth. We didn't have any issues, which was good. Looked like everybody was having a good time. Upcoming, we're kind of shifting gears right now, getting ready for the Rose Parade and Rose Bowl game, so we're going to have that going on. We've got, looks like Oregon State and Wisconsin are going to be the two teams that are going to be in the Rose Bowl game this year. So we'll be escorting them around for the week that they're here. We've got both teams, so. Chips for Kids is still going on through Christmas Eve, so if anybody wants to donate, new unwrapped toy can be dropped off at the Altadena area CHP office or any Walgreens. There's drop-off centers, and then on, we'll get the toys distributed to someone in need in the local areas, so. December, yeah, through December 24th. Let's see here. Rain next week. I just wanted to let everybody know that we've got, yeah, it looks like all next week we're going to have rain, so just be ready and make sure you're slowing down and driving safely. We don't want to have any issues through the holidays, so it's not worth it. Just take the time. Another one that always comes up at this time of year is holiday parties. It seems like the drinking and driving always seems to go up a little bit around this time of the year, so it's, just be smart, be careful when you're at these parties. Within this day and age, with Uber and Lyft, and there's just really no excuse to drink and drive. You can arrange for a ride, or if not, call an Uber or a Lyft. There's usually 15 of them running around within a couple miles of you. As far as stats for November, we had 16 property damage only collisions. We had eight with some form of injury, and we had zero fatalities, and we had four DUI arrests for the month of November. And that's all I have, unless anybody's got something for me.
Any questions? Councilmember Wong.
Yes, so I'm just curious. I know last year when the Christmas Tree Lane was happening, there was a lot of concern about Santa Rosa and Altadena Drive.
Okay. During the ceremony itself?
No, during this whole period.
The regular time.
Kind of coming and going, so...
Yeah, I'm sure it's a lot, a lot more traffic on probably Fridays, Saturdays. I haven't really seen too much issue. I mean, because it backs up, it tends to, everybody tends to drive slow going up Santa Rosa, and there's a stop sign there at...
Yeah, I think it's probably coming and going from Altadena Drive and Santa Rosa.
You're talking about crossing on, crossing Altadena Drive on Santa Rosa?
Yeah, or just getting on it or off, you know.
Yeah, because there's no stop sign on Altadena Drive. Yeah, so, we can take a look at it and see, but I haven't had any complaints about it so far, so I think it's probably flowing okay at this point. So, but if something comes up, we'll get over there. All right?
Have you come to Altadena Arts Magnet yet? I know you said you had it on your calendar.
I did. I did go over there, and I actually am planning to go over there again on Friday.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I did get out there.
Don't go Friday. No school.
Oh, okay. Friday won't be a good day together.
It'd be really quiet.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you very much. Okay, next up is item 3.2 from the Altadena Sheriff's Station. Captain Jacobs.
Mr. Chair, fellow councilmembers. So before I begin, I do want to talk about the Fuentes family gathering we had tonight. I felt it was very special, well-received. Jose was there with the baby and his little daughter, and we had a Santa Claus dressed up, and well, Santa Claus showed up, I should say, with several, several gifts, and just lit up that little girl's heart. I mean, the little baby doesn't really know what's going on, but it was pretty special for all of us involved, and Billy, thank you for being there, representing. It was amazing. So, you mentioned that there was $240, I think it was closer to like $256.
Oh, really?
Then we passed that can. So, with your help, with obviously the town council's help, Altadena Rotary Club, the Grocery Outlet, just amazing outpour from the community that everybody got together for this unfortunate situation with this family. It was, it was very, very special for them, and he was really lost for words. So it was a good deed done by all of us, so it just shows that a small town can really come together when we need each other. So, thank you for that. Just want to announce that we have the Altadena Food and Toy Drive giveaway is going to be this Saturday, December 21st, at Farnsworth Park from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM, or 12 noon. And that's what we're working on so far. Our Part 1 crime is up a little bit, 11 percent. However, this time last month, we are down 18 fewer incidents. That's a lot. So from November, October to November, we're down 18 incidents. And I'll just do some highlights because we want to keep it short and sweet like me. I mean, we'll keep it short. Did I say that? Is that live? Great. It's the holidays! Anyway, remember your humor. Okay, so burglaries, residential burglaries are down from 15 in October to 3 in November. I cannot promise that every month, but I'm very happy when that happens. Larceny vehicle burglaries are down from 17 to 7. So thank you for locking your vehicles and putting things away. It still does happen unfortunately, but we just have to keep trying to remember that. And every time we think we've got it, the crooks get a little bit smarter and they figure out some other device that'll come by, and there's an app that apparently identifies when there's a electronic in your car and where. So if you put your iPad in your glove box and you lock it, they may just find out that you have a iPad in your glove box and lock it from their app. So, just take your valuables out of your car. That'd be great. Also, our arrests are up by eight from October, so I think we're really heading in the right direction. I'll be able to give you an end of the year pass on in January, because I'll have a completed picture of December's crimes and the whole year of 2019. But with that, I just want to thank you, and thanks for the past six months. I look forward to the next year.
Thank you. Any questions from the council first? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Did you have a question? Okay, moving on. Item 3.3, from the Altadena Fire. Maria Graykin, is she here? Welcome.
For the month of November, in Altadena, we had a total of 321 responses. 280 of those were for medical calls. 280 medical incidents, 281 patients. Of those, 208 were transported. We had two fires, a cooking fire on Monterosa Drive and a trash fire on Garfias Drive. No damages for the month, so that's always nice. And then we had a few instances of some arcing wires and a couple of gas leaks. There were eight traffic collisions, two of them involved persons trapped, and one of them was versus pedestrian. And that is the extent of the report. On a different note, I just wanted to update the council that two weeks ago, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved to place our ballot measure on the March ballot. We do have some updated flyers in the back that reflect that information, although the flyers do say that it will be anywhere from 6 cents to 8.9 cents per square foot. It was approved at 6 cents. So it will be 6 cents per square foot. It is not based on your lot size, it is based on the size of your home, the square footage of your home, not the entire lot. So it's the improved structure. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that or about the report.
Any questions on the council? No? Okay. Do you have a question, Councilmember Wong?
How can we find a report? Is there a link or...
It's on the piano.
I'm sorry. For... I'm sorry, the fly, you said on the report.
Oh, the flyers are on the piano. We have some updated flyers on the ballot measure that are on the piano.
Is there a link to anything on your website?
Wearelacounty.org. We are...
Can we...
Abrigo.
Sorry, it's Wearelacountyfire.org.
Wearelacountyfire.org.
Can we take the report on the piano and PDF it onto our site as information?
Of course you can.
Okay.
Yes, and it is also on the, on the Wearelacountyfire.org. But yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that going to be something that homeowners are assessed monthly?
No, on your property tax bill.
On the property tax.
Yeah, it'll be on the property tax bill.
Any more questions? Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
Now, moving on. Item 3.4, Sir. Now I am under the impression that has been canceled for this in the interest of making this meeting short so we can move on to the holiday presentation. So moving on, item 4, Special Presentations. We don't have any, but I do want to make a quick comment. I see some representatives from our dignitaries offices here, from Councilmember, from Supervisor Barker's office, we have Christian, and I think there may be somebody else. Are they here to the holiday party, or were they here to do some kind of...
Chief Director's office. Tell them how we're here.
You have, okay, I want to make sure you got on the, I was going to put you on the...
Please do a photo.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Altadena Community Reports. Item 5, 5.1, LA County Parks and Rec. Sam Estrada.
Good evening, everybody, and happy holidays. We have a lot that's coming up at our parks in Altadena. This week, we're starting off with our Parks After Dark, so we will be having Parks After Dark Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and it starts at 5:00 PM. And it'll be going on, the first major event we have is our Paint Night, and then on Saturday, we will be having our toy giveaway. So make sure you get there soon, or early, I should say. It starts at 11:00 AM with registration, and the event starts at 12 o'clock. And it's for children 13 and under, and we'll be having toys, arts and crafts, jumpers, and coloring contests and things like that, so it should be a lot of fun. But make sure you do get there early so you can ensure that your child gets a toy. We are going to have Parks After Dark this week, but with the Christmas week, there will not be any Parks After Dark, but we will still be having our Snow Day on the 27th. So that still will be going on, and that's going to be from 2:00 to 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And we'll be having a bunch of snow. Everything is going to be free that day, and it'll be a lot of fun for those that have been there in years past. Again, it's going to be Friday, December 27th, from 2:00 to 9:00 PM. And I repeat, there won't be any Parks After Dark, so there won't be anything that Thursday or that Saturday. The Parks After Dark will continue the following week into the New Year, and it'll just be for the, it'll end on that last, first Saturday in January. And also, as the captain said, we will be having the toy giveaway at Farnsworth Park on Saturday as well at 9:00. And then lastly, we are having our Basketball League at La Malta. It's a great program, so they're starting up ages 3 all the way to 14. So if anybody's interested in enrolling in basketball, we're willing to take them. It's a great program, and the cost for that program is $65, and it will be, starting in January, January, the first week of January will be the first set of games. All right? And thank you. If there's not any questions...
Any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Moving on. Item 5.2, Chamber of Commerce Report. Doug Cauliflower.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I just have one, one brief announcement. Please mark your calendars for January 31st is our annual Installation Dinner. Primary function of that dinner is to honor our Citizen of the Year and our Business of the Year, and I'm hoping everybody in the room knows who those people are. They are all here. Our Citizen of the Year is Ms. Veronica Jones. And our Business of the Year is Grocery Outlet, Michelle Amario Garado. Come on, Michelle, Amario, stand up. There we go. Invites will go out right after the first of the year. I believe the start time is 6:00 PM. Ticket price will be held steady at $85 per person, and hopefully we'll see you all there. It should be a great evening. And we do have, yes, part of, we have, thank you Diane, part of the dinner is a auction, silent auction, live auction, to raise money for scholarships, and we've been successful in raising $4,000 every year for the last, at least, what, three years, I believe? Three or four years, Billy? So, and that's where those resources come from. So your support in that, that part of the event is also much appreciated. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item 5.3, Altadena Library. Nikki Winslow. Welcome.
Yay! Hello. Good evening. My name is Nikki Winslow, and I'm the new Director of the Altadena Library District. I started in, thank you, this amazing role on November 4th, and it has been a very busy for six weeks, but really wonderful. At the libraries, we know that community partnerships fuel our ability to provide experiences that inspire curiosity, connect neighbor with neighbor, and celebrate our unique history. We are grateful to have the Altadena Town Council as a strong partner in the work we do to provide robust and meaningful services to the people that call Altadena home, or those that wish they did. Saturday night, I was honored to speak at the tree lighting ceremony on Christmas Tree Lane, and it was truly magical to see so many people of all ages and backgrounds come together and celebrate this time-honored tradition in its 99th year. It reminds me of how fortunate our libraries are to serve a community that cares deeply for one another's well-being and that works hard together around community-building efforts. We are excited to carry that spirit into our work in the coming year. It is an exciting time for the Altadena Libraries, as we are finalizing a new strategic plan, looking at how we can improve and enhance our two library locations, and strengthening our staff to better serve Altadena. I encourage you to stop by one of our two locations, say hi, and learn about the many opportunities we offer to connect with our two sites. We will be hosting two more Town Hall meetings to gather feedback for our Architectural and Design Review Study on January 13th at the Bob Lucas Branch at 6:30 PM, and on January 16th at the Main Library at 6:30 PM. Again, we want to gather as much feedback from the public about what you'd like to see in the design as we're looking at renovating and changing some of the library space. Let's see. Yeah, so it's Monday, January 13th, at the Bob Lucas Branch at 6:30, and Thursday, January 16th, at Main Library at 6:30. Couple other programs that I wanted to highlight. We are excited to have the authors, Peter Eisenhardt and Michael Werner, both of JPL and with very impressive backgrounds, to present their book, More Things in Heaven: How Infrared Astronomy is Expanding Our View of the Universe. This will be at the Main Library at 2:00 PM on Saturday, January 11th. I did bring handouts, and I'll put handouts for all of these that I'm talking about out. Following that, we are excited to kick off the second Saturday on January 11th, also same day, at 6:30 PM. We will be featuring Magnolia Drawl with line dancing lessons right at 6:30. So if you show up, you can learn how to line dance and do that throughout the night. And finally, one of the first programs I wandered in on in November was our Open Mic Night. Have any of you guys been to it? It's always on the second Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM. There are musicians, singers, comedians. It's actually really fun, so if you're looking for something to do on a Tuesday night, I would highly recommend it. So the next one of that will be on January 14th. I also brought our Connect Newsletter, lots of copies if people want to grab that for December programs, both in English and Spanish. So, oh, and my last plug, we're also doing a fundraising, fundraising campaign right now with our library foundation. It's called the Altadena Gives Winter Tree. If you come in, you can buy a little diodara tree and fill it out and donate to the library, and then hang it on the tree in the middle of the library. So if you want to come support the library, please do so. Let's see. I'm grateful that the Library Board of Trustees chose me to steer our libraries into a new era, and I look forward... into a new era, and I look forward, um, to all the work the staff, trustees, and I will do in coordination with the Altadena Town Council and other local organizations in the next year and beyond. Um, thank you all, and happy holidays. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Thank you and welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Um, are you going to be staying for the reception after?
Of course.
Okay, so good chance to network and get to know your new library, uh, director, so please stay. Okay, moving on, um, item six, general public comments.
Looks like we have two items here, um, and Higginbottom.
Good evening, everyone, council members and community members. Thank you. I'm Ann Higginbottom, representing your Assembly Member Chris Holden, bringing you greetings for the, for this holiday season and a happy new year. Just a few pieces of information I have in the back, uh, we're now taking nominations for the district for Small Business of the Year for 2020. I have the application form in the back. It's due back March 14th, and our application period is also open now for women of distinction. In those, uh, applications are due January 31st, and in both instances, he will pick a, an entity of distinction for each of his 11 cities, and the unincorporated, like, Altadena, and then one overall, woman of distinction, woman of the year, business of the year. We had a very successful legislative year. We're now, as of January 6th, when the Assembly and the Legislature reconvenes, we'll go into year two of this two-year session, and we have a bill package that will be probably available in early January, but also in the back, I've given you highlights of the budget victories that the Assembly Member had this year and his legislative package. So, thank you all very much. If you have any questions, I'll be around. I will be, I'll definitely be at the party. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Christian Daley.
Let this up just a little bit. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and to the Town Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm so used to saying on behalf, but no longer will I be saying that. Uh, you may have heard, um, but I am no longer with Supervisor Barker's office. I resigned in, uh, November 20th, and I did so so I could run for office, uh, so I could run for Congress to represent Altadena and the 27th District in Washington, DC. Um, for me, it's been an extreme joy and pleasure to come back into the community that I've, uh, grown up in, not only represent, but to advocate and to serve, and now I look forward to, uh, serving and having that capacity go, go greater, uh, and be of greater impact to Altadena and the surrounding community. So, it's been a joy. Uh, this is not goodbye. Uh, you will see me, uh, quite often as I look to, uh, again, uh, be of greater service to this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all the public comment.
That was all the public comments?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on, our last item on the agenda, um, committee reports from the 7.1 Land Use Committee, Councilmember Markerson.
Hi. Um, two weeks ago, the Land Use Committee met to review a project regarding a cell tower, um, located at 2949 Lincoln Avenue. The committee reviewed that project twice over a number of months, and, um, we voted to recommend approval with conditions. Um, Chris O'Malley is here, uh, and can answer any questions that you may have, but will also make a motion if anybody has any questions now, um, regarding the project. I think most of you have had time to review it and/or were on the Land Use Committee, so, um, okay. Chris, do you have a motion to, yeah, that, yeah, up here would be great. Yeah, I'm sorry, thanks. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, because we don't, oh, because, okay. Well, we don't, yeah.
I move, uh, that the Altadena Town Council accept the recommendation of the Land Use Committee with conditions for approval of the Verizon cellphone tower. I don't have the project number in front of me, sorry.
And I have the project number, which is, um, CUP 2015-00095. R, or, and, and CP number R2015-02353, um, at, located at 24, 2949, sorry, Lincoln Avenue. Gloria, do you have the, the condit, the list of conditions for the project?
No, I don't have the ones that he emailed, but I just want to say that, um, you know, the, whether the new pro, um, project, we did, um, uh, canvassed the community three years ago, and at that particular time, the, the general consensus from the residents was that, um, they, 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 uh, preferred that Verizon and Sprint share a, a cell tower.
Right, and that's what, that's what this project is, is to have a new tower built, um, that both will share, uh, and, um, uh, we have... We also, by the way, did, we canvassed, um, quite a number of, do you have the, how many?
I have the conditions. Oh, you want everything?
Oh, Chris has the conditions, too.
So, per the resolution, it was passed by the Land Use Committee. The conditions have been amended from the original recommendations to read as follows. Uh, work on installation is to be done during business hours, that's 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Generator testing is to be done during business hours, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, generator is to meet all CA air pollution, noise, and earthquake building laws. Um, Verizon shall co-locate their equipment with Sprint on a single mono, uh, eucalyptus tower. Um, Ver, Verizon shall physically inspect and repair the tire, the tower, no less than once a quarter, and, uh, network operations center phone number shall be clearly posted on site.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thanks, Chris. So, Gloria, then, do you have a motion to? She's the town councilperson. Thanks, Chris.
Sure.
Well, I, um, I don't have the, um...
It's on the agenda, the number.
So, I'd like to, um, make a motion to, uh, for the Town Council to approve the, um, where is it? The CUP 20150095, R2015-02353, Verizon and Sprint Wireless, um, facility with the, um, attached conditions.
A second.
Okay, who's seconded?
Sandra.
Sandra.
Okay. Do you want to call for the vote?
Any questions before I go to the vote? And we have no public comments. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So moved.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, 7.2, Holiday Party Committee, Councilmember Knapp.
Hi again. Um, I wanted to thank everyone that's here and in attendance, and hope that you will stay to join us. Um, I specifically wanted to thank, um, Zero Waste, Green Circle? Green Circle, um, for providing the reusable utensils and plates for our party tonight. Um, I wanted to thank Grocery Outlet for bringing, I think, a ham, among other things. I wanted to thank Bloomfield Creamery for their donation of three, um, ice creams. I believe we have organic cookies and cream. We have a milk spiced doughnut, and then one more that's gluten-free, that's like an ube, I think, ube and coconut. And I wanted to thank Coffee Gallery, I don't, oh, there he is, Michael's in the back, um, for his donation of coffee and our, and/or samples from, um, their Naturewell Juice line. And did I forget anyone? Wait, thinking, oh, and El Patron. El Patron supplied, um, their famous potato tacos, and their art taquitos as well, in addition to everything else that we've, um, that we provided as part of the council.
Is that it?
That is it.
Okay, moving on, we do, we have one census tract report, and then we're going to adjourn for the party. So, since, item number eight, census tract report for 4301.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry for making a census tract report on our holiday party, but, uh, just quickly, uh, again, the Alta Passa Green Circle, uh, does everything they can in partnership with the Altadena Farmers Market, which takes place at Loma Alta Park, um, and they are asking for volunteers Wednesdays from 3:00 PM to 8:30. So, if you want to wash some dishes and learn how to go zero waste, uh, hang out with Green Circle Wednesdays at the Farmers Market. And then I just wanted to make this notice, um, it's a community meeting, that's going to happen before our next Town Council meeting, on Saturday, January 11th, uh, at Eaton Canyon Nature Center at 10:00 AM, Saturday, January 11th. LA County Regional Planning is hosting a community meeting about county historic districts. The meeting will answer questions regarding historic districts, um, and so if you want to learn more about that, specifically owners of properties located in, uh, the proposed Altadena Historic Districts of Historic Highlands and Janes Village, as well as any other community members or interested parties are invited to attend the meeting. So if you want to learn more about historic districts in Altadena, uh, contact Dean Edwards. His phone number is 213-974-0087. Um, I will also share the information, uh, on our website, uh, so it'll be a, definitely an interesting meeting, again, Saturday, January 11th. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
10:00 AM.
And unless I have anything else? To adjourn?
I can adjourn, and then I'll make...
Okay, um, motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, that's fine, but don't you want to, like, explain to everybody?
I will.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah, okay.
Did you motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so everyone who's going to stay for our party, we have Elliott Choir here that's going to perform for us. We just need five minutes of setup time, so this would be a great time to take a potty break, to go out into the foyer. We're going to turn the room around very quickly, and then we'll invite you right back in. So give us just five minutes.
Welcome to our, I believe it's our fourth annual holiday party. We appreciate everyone that's in attendance tonight. Um, before our choir sings, I'm going to lead us in a quick, uh, Christmas poem. So if I can get attention up here, Jennifer Lee, and David, Jennifer, we're going to get attention up here. Okay, so, this is a poem called "A Friend's Greeting" by Edgar Guest. "I'd like to be the sort of friend that you have been to me. I'd like to be the help that you've been, always glad to be. I'd like to mean as much to you each minute of the day as you have met, meant, old friend of mine, to me along the way. I'd like to do big things and the splendid things for you, to brush the gray out of your skies and leave them only blue. I'd like to say the kindly things that I so oft have heard, and feel that I could rouse your soul the way that mine you've stirred. I'd like to give back the joy that you have given me, yet that we're wishing you in need I hope will never be. I'd like to make you feel as rich as I who travel on, undaunted in the darkest hours, with you to lean upon. I'm wishing at this Christmas time that I could but repay a portion of the gladness that you've strewn along the way. And could I have one wish this year, this only would it be, I'd like to be the sort of friend that you have been to me." And with that, um, we are very fortunate to have the choir from Elliott here to perform. They've got, um, four songs for us, so without further ado, we'll turn it over to them.
Flower flow, when flesh and steel are one, drying in the color of the evening sun. Tomorrow's rain will wash the stains away, but something in our mind will always stay. Perhaps this final act was meant to slinch a lifetime's argument. Something in, something never could, an angry star. Let's say fragile, fragile we are. On and on the rain will fall, like tears from a star, like tears from a star. On and on the rain will say how fragile we are, how fragile we are. Flower flow, when flesh and steel are one, drying in the color of the evening sun. Tomorrow's rain will wash the stains away, but something in our mind will always stay. On and on...
Thank you. We're from Elliott Middle School. We are just now getting ready for, uh, for our winter concert this morning, so we used to have you, you know, bring a candle to the stage for lights, so, uh, thank you for being interested in this hall here, over here. Our next song is going to be Titanium, and then we will end with Diamond.
You shout it out, but I can't hear what you say. I'm talking loud, not saying much. I'm criticized, but all your bullets ricochet. You shoot me down, but I get up. I'm bulletproof, nothing to lose. Fire away, fire away. Ricochet, you take your aim. Fire away, fire away. Shoot me down, but I won't fall. I am Titanium. You shoot me down, but I won't fall. I am Titanium. You cut me down, but it's you who has further to fall. Goldstone, haunted love. Raise your voice, 'cause sticks and stones may break my bones. I'm talking loud, not saying much. I'm bulletproof, nothing to lose. Fire away, fire away. Ricochet, you take your aim. Fire away, fire away. Shoot me down, but I won't fall. I am Titanium.